Call everyone to order this evening with, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I will start this evening with my chair report. I will go ahead and just say that on behalf of the Board of Education, we are extremely grateful to the hard work of the staff, teachers, finance, HR, people services, technology, of course, who I'm sure is putting in quite a bit of time with us. I'd like to say, I've been very impressed so far with the quality of the distance learning from the educators. I know that even with my third grader teachers are making personal calls, walking them through different formats and the technology. I see that there is actually, the principals are doing principals lunch with each classroom at different grade levels, with all the different activities, the parades and the music that have been going on the past few weeks. I think it really does show an example of East Haven pride. And I'd just like to again, thank everyone on behalf of the Board. Erica?
Thanks, Michelle. We really appreciate the Board's support and can't thank you enough for partnering with us during this challenging time and hosting these and having these Zoom meetings and special meetings. We wouldn't be able to get the work off the ground without your support, so thank you. I also like to extend a huge, huge thank you to my cabinet, Randall, Lynn, Jen Piercy, Jen Murry, Bob Swan. You have been absolutely instrumental in getting all this work lifted, as well as central, my central office staff. Julie Church, all-American, our administrators, our teachers. None of this would have been possible without the levels of collaboration, organization, and operational structures that were put, were put in place. It makes me really proud to be part of it and to be able to lead the work. It's really, really impressive. And I know where we are today isn't even gonna be where we end in June. But with that being said, Jennifer Murry put together a presentation for you tonight, very short and brief, but intentionally filled with all types of tools and things that are going on every single day, as well as information about resources that are available on our website at a click of a button. She's worked extensively with Bob Swan and Randall to ensure that our students' technology needs, but also their individual learning needs are being met and that our staff is equipped with the resources and supports they need to be successful. So Jen, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Erica. So it's been quite a journey from March 12th, when we realized that the 13th, our students would be, we'd be closed for an extended period of time. And on that day, we started working really hard on supplemental learning. So this is the paper packets that you may have seen in your home, which had lots of a choice board for fun activities for students to do. And that provided about 10 days worth of activities that allowed our teachers to work on building a platform that would be robust for our students, starting, starting just recently on April 1st was our first day that we went live. So if you would like to join me on a quick journey, I'm gonna share my screen with you. Erica, you may need to enable screen sharing on your end for me, or I can just have you click through the slides as I speak. I believe that presentation's shared with you. So I wanna make sure that I afford everybody an opportunity to think through all of the things that we've been able to do with, with our distance learning. So this includes, again, so much of this has been a labor of love from all of the people that Erica mentioned. I received so many calls from parents appreciating just the time to sit down with the papers and think about the the different ways that they're able to get outside. We've worked really hard, meeting with various folks, the paraprofessionals, the teachers. Okay, so I'll speak to the slides while we go through. And I'm gonna put a couple of links in the chat feature as well, that you can look at and peruse. Over the course of this journey, we've also provided several different websites that our teacher, that our teachers can go to for their, and our teachers and our families to support learning at home.
So I need, I just need Michelle to unlock my sharing screen as well.
There we go. Thank you. Can everybody see it?
Yeah.
Yes.
View slideshow, present. Okay.
So the theme that I've been talking with our teachers about is that in this unprecedented time, we are building a bridge to our kids at home. We are under no pretense that everything that we're doing is exactly the same as it would be if we were in our classroom. However, that's not necessarily what our kids need right now. Our kids need that continuity, that connection. And so we've been thinking about that as we, as we sort of build a bridge. Next slide. So as we think about what the goals are of this sustained initiative that started with putting packets together that really reflected the goals of reading, writing, problem solving, moving every day, and, and becoming sort of observant of the world around us, we wanted to kind of build on that. And we provided access to as much learning for students as we possibly can. We wanted to provide comfort and connection to our students. And these, this was a really important part. We wanted to assist our students, teachers, and families as we get used to this next phase of learning. And I think the exciting part is that we're gonna be able to help our teachers and our students develop some new skills as a result of this body of work. The other important thing that we considered is how to be really good caretakers of the resources that the East Haven community provides, including our Board of Education, the budget, and the materials. So we want to be mindful that we were taking advantage of all of the things that, and opportunities that are, we could afford to our students, to make sure we can serve our kids. So by the numbers, right here's some of the data. We had over 450 Chromebooks distributed after the close of school, with protocols involving very safe procurement and, and people driving by, making sure there was no issue with contagion. Excuse me, honey, can you please go in the other room? Okay. So the over 290 closed technology support, help tickets were family assistance calls were averaging about 10 per day just out of our office. So that is, that does not count all of the numerous calls that our teachers and our principals are making to connect, our ESL teachers, all of those support professionals, guidance counselors. So just in our office, Julie Church is reaching out specifically to families, whether or not they have internet, based on some of the da, based on some of the surveys that we sent out in the beginning. And if you could go to the next slide, Erica? So we actually sent out two copies of the same survey, one in English and one in Spanish. We had over 977 people respond. We asked questions about, do you have access to the internet at home? Do you have a reliable and safe place to do work? Do you have a device that you can use? And where those folks indicated that they would need support, we've been reaching out periodically. We've been getting them devices. We've been connecting them to some of these online solutions that you'll see more about in the next, I think, the next slide. There's a brief screencast that Erica may be able to play for you.
I don't think so.
Okay. Here it goes.
Here we goes. Hello, East Haven Board of Education. I wanted to provide you with an opportunity to ask some questions or see some of the things that we have to offer our students as far as distance learning goes. So just to make you aware of a couple of things we've been providing, there's way more than I can cover in a brief screencast, but I just wanted to orient you. This is our Distance Learning for Parents page, and we've made some suggestions about how families can support their children at home. We do recommend that folks start small, help the children to tackle one thing at a time. We know that getting into routine can be difficult, as many parents are facing challenges to work from home while still trying to support their child's learning. Helping to connect folks socially, in this time of social distancing, we're also trying to maintain some of those connections. Our teachers are offering some class meetings using online platforms such as Google Hangouts Meet, or reaching out by phone to ask friends questions is other, other recommendations. We provide a little bit of a letter. Each of the links here refer to a document that was created to provide some additional guidance about how we're handling the various questions that come to our office around COVID-19. So please take a moment at your, at your convenience to review the documents that are linked here and direct any of your neighbors and friends to our website on the Teaching and Learning page from the East Haven Public Schools website. Again, another question about the secondary, many kids are concerned about moving forward. Unfortunately, because the situation continues to evolve, we don't necessarily have all of the answers, but we're working very hard to make sure that we are helping and supporting families. One thing we are doing is helping to connect students to Chromebooks and helping families understand how to access the internet. Our family and community engagement facilitator, Julie Church, has been painstakingly reaching out to families and helping to provide them with information about frontier internet essentials and the local hotspots that are free for use, as well as many of the members of our teams have deployed Chromebooks via school-based deployment where students have remained, as parents have remained in their cars. So that's been a very helpful component of getting distance learning off the ground. We do have some videos as well for parents to help understand how our clever portal and our Google classrooms are structured so that this can help them. Our teachers had an opportunity every day, there's several sessions of distance learning support with technology specialists, Mike Archibald and Taylor Auger.
Glad to be with Robinson as well.
Keeping with gas, many of our teachers have done innovative, exciting things. In a couple of days, we put together this whole Distance Learning Hub website, which offers personalized professional development for teachers that they can go in and find things that benefit them. These include any of these links here that give teachers some ideas of some things that they can do, including a Google slide that was presented to teachers in a Zoom meeting, and specific skills that teachers can use to design activities for their classrooms. Again, there's way more here, but teachers have appreciated many of the different options that they had to meet the needs of their students. So those are just some of the things that I wanted to bring your attention to. I would go ahead and also share with you some of our principals' morning messages, which have been, they're, create continuity among the students in our classes. We're building a bridge from home.
Did you want me to pause it, Jen? Because I can go back to the slides, because now we have some of the different items that you'll see, and we'll show you some of the principles. So what do our students see? What did they experience as they go through their distance learning day? Next slide. This would be a way that they might start the day. So you heard in the screencast, I referred to some of the daily announcements. So I'll just show you one. This is Laura Cretella, and we may not, we may not read the entire story with Mrs. Cretella, but we can see how she may start her day at Dear Run. The kids will receive a message.
Good morning, Dear Run. Today is Wednesday, April 1st, 2020. We miss you at Dear Run. And today, we are launching our At Home Learning. We are first gonna start with our morning announcements. At Dear Run, we are nice to our friends. Everyone belongs. We stay safe and we try our very best every day. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. We're gonna move on to our Dear Run School song, sung by our second graders.
Dear Run School, more than just a place. It's where we learn together, a style of friendly place. We'll make us proud of who we are and who we will become. We all make free, but part of us, Dear Run. Dear Run School, help us find a way to feel like we're set.
We're gonna move on to our code word for the day. Our code word is F-R-I-E-N-Z. Do you know what our word is? Our word is friend. Nice work. We are really proud of you. Our last part is we're going to read the Thank You book by Mo Willems. We're sending out a big thank you to our families and our teachers and our Dear Run team. We miss you, Dear Run, and we cannot wait to see you soon.
So that's just an example of how students might start their day at, at Dear Run. And I've just provided in the slideshow, just a few other examples of what they might see. So we use Google Classroom. We were fortunate that so many of our teachers in 3 through 12 already had existing Google Classroom sites built, so that our, their students were accustomed. And this year, we were fortunate that with our K5 reading and math curricular materials, we were able to use that to link many of the video lesson materials and online practice components. So it was reasonably seamless for many of our teachers. Obviously, there was a lot of folks working really hard to get the tech organized, but students would see their list of assignments on a Thursday and a Friday and receive, be, be able to receive secure links. So we provided teachers with some guidance about Zoom, how to maintain the security, making sure that those students were only clicking on links originating from the teacher and into the Google Classroom. So you can move to the next slide. And again, this is an example, the teachers would see how many students have turned in and how many were assigned. And so this would be an example of an assignment that they may have, using some of our materials about water cycle and looking at, filling out a graphic organizer with main ideas and detail, details. So students have the opportunity to, this is a young, this is a second grade classroom. So all of these students, our K2 teachers really worked hard getting kids online, but there were some really helpful tools that they were already used to using. And, and so Google Classroom has been a very important component. Next slide. So this, one of the things that we talked about was to have norms for online meetings. Treating, treating this room like it's their classroom, one person speaks at a time, very similar to how we would run a professional Zoom meeting. And so it was really, really an opportunity for students to become, to empower themselves and learn about how, how we structure things and incorporating things like a question of the day or a solve and share math problem. We are finding teachers are having lots of success with things like Flipgrid. So Flipgrid allows students to record brief sections of video so that they can tell what they are thought about the perimeter problem. So they might be, the teacher can see the student's face as they're expressively talking about something that they've solved. Next slide. And so here is your opportunity. There's so much more that I could share with you about the wonderful things going on, but I wanted to provide you with an opportunity to ask any questions about our distance learning plan or let me know if you had any feedback or wanted to know anything specific. So thank you. Michelle, are you muted? I can't hear you. Looks like you're talking.
I think she's trying to unmute Tia, who has her hand up.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanna say, that looks like really, really wonderful work. I am amazed at my school system. I'm amazed at East Haven Public School system, what you guys put together. That was so, there's a lot of intricate, hard work. I know what you put into it. I feel it. I'm living it, breathing it every day of my life, and I think it looks awesome. Awesome. You have so many avenues for teachers to grab onto and to make, to pull it in and keep it all going. I, I think it's unbelievable, unbelievable, over the top. I love it.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions at this time? No? Okay, well, that brings us to correspondence. Is there any correspondence at this time? Erica? Okay, so that will bring us to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of meeting minutes. For, we have meeting, regular board meeting, March 17th, 2020. Special board meeting, March 19th, 2020, and special board meeting, March 20th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Set.
Motion?
I move.
Go ahead, Mary.
I move that you accept the minutes from March 17th, March 19th, and March 20th.
Second.
All in favor of this, this meeting, from 17th, 19th, and 20th, say it right?
Aye.
Let's move on to approval of the consent agenda. We have approval of invoices for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Wait, that should be 2019, 2020, should it not?
Yes.
You did a typo. 2019, 2020, in the amount of $1,744,778.80. Approval of all purchase orders over 7,000, and approval of budget transfers in the amount of $374,633.39. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Fine.
I'll second it.
Tia and Mary Ann, thank you. That will bring us to our audience of citizens portion of this evening. Mrs. Santiago, would you like to read our audience of citizens for this evening?
You're muted.
Oh, there we go. Sorry, yeah, I just, let me just turn my video off so I can pull up the. We only have one email I was sent from Alan. Let me just pull it up very quickly. Okay. So we have one email. It is from Christine Baccatara. It says, "Good afternoon. I am a one-on-one para for a beautiful third grade little girl from a Mogwai school. I have been a special ed para at Maw Magwai for four years." I'm just turning it sideways so it's bigger. Okay. "And I have been her one-on-one para since first grade. The improvements and strides this little girl has made are unbelievable. For the average person, you would expect a third grader to walk in the hall and not run. Well, to me and my co-para, this is one of our greatest accomplishments with our girl. We have such a bond with this little girl, and I'm worried that she is going to think we abandoned her as we didn't get to say goodbye to her properly on Thursday, thinking we would see her Friday. It's breaking my heart. Not only have I bonded with her, I've bonded with so many students at Maw Magwai. I don't think of myself just as working with her, but we work with the children that surround her. They are the best group of kids ever, and I'm not just a para. I'm a teacher, a social worker, a peacemaker, a multitasking mom, a nurse, and not just her, but the whole community of Maw Magwai children. They know they can come to us when their teacher is doing a lesson or helping other students. Not only myself, but all the pares of Maw Magwai go above and beyond for our kids. My heart is broken not going to work every day to see my kids. I greet them every morning when they get off the bus. This is the highlight of my day. I'm asking for fair pay in this trying time. We deserve to be compensated for our time off. This isn't a vacation for us. We need our pay to live and survive, as do so many others. I love my job, and I can't wait to get back to the kids. We teach our kids about being fair to each other, so now is the time to practice what we preach. That's all we want. I've given so many hours to my kids unpaid time by coming in early and setting up or punching out and staying without pay in order to make sure one of our special ed students doesn't have a breakdown. They get on the bus happy and stay happy until they get home to parents. I love my job, and I hope you all do the fair thing." Thank you, Kristin Baccatara. It was just that one, one letter I received from Alan.
All right, thank you. Okay, so that, I will turn it over to the superintendent at this time. Erica?
Yes, discussion and possible action on Castle Boo's architect contract. As discussed in subcommittee, that contract is currently being reviewed by the building committee, who could provide us with insight and input onto some changes, and it will come back in a revised form to the Board of Education. We're happy to organize a Zoom meeting with the Board and/or representatives from the building committee to talk about those changes and sort of get that tightened up for approval so we can move forward with the work. So that was just, no action on that this evening. Discussion and possible action on the technicians' MOU. We discussed in subcommittee, a whole bunch of MOUs for various bargaining units, the technicians, the secretaries, administrators, mid-management, and nurses. All the MOUs outline the option to work remotely during the COVID-19 pandemic. Each one is specific to the bargaining unit's contract and ensures that they are compensated for a full year of work. It does provide them the option to come in should the health environment be conducive to them reporting to work or offers them the opportunity to work remotely, depending on the circumstance. It also affords the superintendent the opportunity to call back any staff at any point between now and the end of the school year. If school should resume in session, or if it's not in session, work that needs to be conducted in the buildings can then be conducted. This evening, I ask for your possible action on the technicians' MOU.
I have a question. So do we have to do all of these individually?
They are on the, the agenda individually because they are each a little different based on the bargaining unit language. Some of our bargaining unit members get vacation and personal time, and so in them, in those MOUs, it is specific that those individuals would have to take that time prior to June 30th. There's other contracts where that doesn't apply.
Okay.
So the general, in essence of all the MOUs is very similar.
Okay, Lisa, question? Yes.
Do we not make the motion first?
If she has a clarifying question. I'm trying to unmute her now. I'm gonna mute her. There we go.
You, you passed it twice, so just, just move, move along, finish, go ahead.
No, it's open. You're open.
It, you had passed it. One was something previous. I have to ask your question really quick. So each time, just so we're clear, that you're gonna, the mic's muted, and each time we don't respond, we have to ask it and chat by the text. we have to ask it and chat by the time you guys are moving along. So that's the way it works every time?
Raise your, yeah.
I did, I was like this. I was like this, you didn't see that?
See every single person, because sometimes it shifts to who's talking.
Gotcha.
So if you, I do have the chat up, like, right in the middle.
Yeah.
That, that's why I was just, yeah, I was able to get that.
Michelle, 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 go to the very top of your screen and put it on grid, and you might, you'll be able to see everybody.
It's gallery view.
On that now. It was, I had it moved for when we were doing this slideshow.
Okay.
Yeah. I got it.
Okay.
I got it. I'm trying. Covering.
So am I making, is it time for me to make the motion?
Yes.
That's all I need to know.
Yes.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the MOU for the technicians. Second.
Okay.
Maybe raise your hand, too, so we can see, right?
Nope, Erica's open. All right, so we have the motion before you is to accept the MOU. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Staying?
No, Lisa's frozen.
She's good.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, discussion and possible action on the secretary's MOU.
Make a motion to accept the MOU for the secretaries. Second.
Second. Any questions? All in favor, you approve the secretary's MOU, say aye.
Aye.
You guys, do you see the little reaction button? Everyone can put a little thumbs up if they want to be recorded as a.
Where's that, Michelle?
That was a suggestion from Bob. I think it's a great one. All right.
Where is that, Michelle, huh?
Right on your toolbar line on the bottom. You see how it says react, reaction has a smiley face?
Mine's a thumbs up.
Yeah, thumbs up. Well, it's a reaction symbol with smiley face, and you hit.
I don't have that, guys.
Sure, you do. Go to the bottom of your screen.
On the bottom.
It's to the right. Sometimes it'll pop back up. It says reactions.
Do you see it, Lee?
I don't know what this is.
Yeah, there's something new now. No, the other, the regular bottom is.
No, you're, we're viewing your, your.
That's not mine, honey.
Michelle, it's not, it's not showing up on yours right now.
Yeah, because.
I don't have it, hon. I just have the, the camera, the YouTube, the pages. I don't have it on.
Way over to the right, but Michelle, if your screen.
I'm all over my darn screen. It's not there. It's fine. I, I.
We can just raise our hand at the same time that you say aye. Oh, boy, Michelle, we're gonna.
Play some pictures. Hold them, Miranda.
There you go, stop share. Okay, so, all right, so you don't have to do it. Also, so all in favor, say aye. Go to motion carries. Let's move on.
Discussion and possible action on the administrator's MOU.
So I may make a motion to accept the MOU for the administrators.
Second.
All in favor to approve the MOU for the administrators, say aye.
Aye.
Motion here, opposed, abstained, motion.
Discussion and possible action on the mid-management MOU.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the MOU for the mid-management group.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Erica, okay, any questions on the mid-management MOU? Anyone? Okay, all in favor of the mid-management MOU, say aye.
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 Discussion and possible action on the nurses' MOU.
I put forward that we accept the motion for the action of accepting the nurses' MOU. Sorry.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor to approve the nurses' MOU, say aye.
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 You have a question?
No.
Oh, you're just raising your hand, okay. All right, great.
I inadvertently skipped over the 5.4, which was the paraprofessionals' MOU. Not intentionally, but that MOU has not been solidified yet, so I will bring it back at the next board meeting if it's completed. There'll be no action on that one.
All right, sounds, sounds good. Is there anything else that would come before the board this evening?
What would be the timeframe on that, Erica?
I've presented them with a draft, and I'm waiting to hear from them. So I, you know.
I know.
It couldn't happen before this meeting, so, you know, in two weeks, I'm hoping to have it for you at the next meeting.
Right, so is there any other questions? Anything, anyone like, would like to enter for the next meeting?
Are we moving forward at all with any negotiations, Erica?
So, I'm gonna allow you guys, I'm gonna have everyone unmute themselves as they go to talk, because when I just tried unmuting everyone, I don't know if everyone heard all of that noise. But I did. But you should be able to unmute yourself if you want to speak. No, it's not letting you? Try it again.
Okay.
There we are.
Okay. It's just when everybody unmuted all at once, it was a lot of interference, like back noise.
So did you hear my question, Erica?
I did. It was a great question. Natalia did reach out to both Dan and there's a new representative for the paraprofessionals. And they said at this time that they weren't ready to engage in negotiations, but would be in touch. And Natalia said that they would, she would follow up with them in a couple of weeks.
And Tia, who else do we have on?
We have secretaries.
We have secretaries and paraprofessionals.
And that's together?
No, because the paraprofessionals have a new representative. It's not the same representative as the secretaries anymore.
Are we waiting for the secretaries, though, now to go forward?
We reached out, and they said that they just needed a couple of weeks, but I believe the sentiment was that they were willing to negotiate virtual or allow, you know, the, the legal parties, like the board's attorney and the UPSU representative to work together and then report back to their teams. So I was copied on some correspondence from Natalia, the board attorney, to both bargaining units. The paraprofessionals were not ready and didn't know if they could be ready in a, in a couple of weeks because of the change in their UPSU representative. But we'll follow up with the secretary since there was no change there. Good.
Tia, I could unmute myself. I, I think now you guys can hear me. I didn't hear your question. I'm sorry. Do you mind just repeating it?
Did you hear her, her answer?
I just wanted to hear your question.
I asked about the negotiations for the paraprofessionals and the secretaries.
Oh, just that, okay. Thank you.
That was it. Sure. Did we do the nurses?
Yes.
Yes. Nurses are done.
Yeah, the only two on the schedule for, I believe, for the rest of the year is the secretaries and the paras.
Yes, because we had finished with technicians, teachers, mid-management. Yeah, because there were five this year. So two more left.
I think it's gonna be a bit, I just don't know.
Okay, I, I got it. I wrote down MOU text passed, MOU secretaries passed, administration passed, mid-management passed, nurses passed, paras, no action. So I had secretaries passed.
Yeah, but that's just the MOU for the working, distance learning. I'm sorry, I just.
You're good. Thank you.
All right, so is there anything else anyone would like to discuss this evening before we adjourn? Well, for actually, you know what? I wanted to add something. I just wanted to ask to see if Mr. Osborne could just give us a little update on how things are going from his end.
Sure. Hello, everybody. We're busy, for sure. Our, our support umbrella has expanded to include not only students and teachers, but now we're taking an awful lot of phone calls from parents. I would say we are, pretty much all systems go, though. You know, we have embraced Zoom as a platform for teleconferencing, and we have people up to speed. We're doing support relative to that. We've done an awful lot of telephone support for families of pre-K to grade two, where typically Chromebooks don't go home, and parents aren't familiar with the login process. So we've been helping people through the process relative to clever and Chromebook login and answering a lot of, a lot of calls. Jen pointed out that, that we use a ticketing system to log calls, and we do. Sometimes it's easier just to pick up the phone and solve the problem than, you know, take the time to write the ticket. So I, I think that kind of under-represents what we do. I think we're blessed with a great department that works well together. Thank goodness for Carmen and her bilingual skills. We're, we're learning that we have a diverse community, and some of our communication skills are really put to the test sometimes, but we're in a good place.
Thank you. Randall, is there anything that we can do on our end to assist you?
Well, I, I think, you know, tonight's passage of the MOU that allows us to work from home is tremendous. I thank you for that. And will allow us to, to, to work safely and effectively.
And you should also know that as part of the PO approval, the air conditioning units for the server room, all of the VPNs, remote servers, and telephones, a purchase for some iPads, and I think there was one more on there, to assist with our distance learning. Zoom and upgrade to video cameras at the high school and other schools was all approved this evening as well.
And I just wanted to ask Mr. Swan, if, a little update on his end, because I'm sure it is a difficult time possibly for the pupil services department, and I just wanted to see how it was going.
So we're gonna, we started with an emphasis on making sure that we connected personally and as frequently as possible with our most disabled population and our kids with less disabilities. As you can imagine, this was a huge lift for kids age three to 21 who have a variety of cognitive and developmental challenges that are really hard to meet under the best of circumstances during the course of a regular, occurring school day. So now we're trying to do the same services, both educational and related services, which includes PTOT, speech, ECBA services, and a variety of other type of tasks that we do, like assistive tech remotely. My team that I've been blessed to be surrounded with, including Erica, Jen, and Randall, have really, we've slogged through it and really made some pretty remarkable strides with a pretty, a pretty terrific teaching staff and paraprofessionals who, who, who if it wasn't for the, 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 some of the dynamics and some of the safety and other concerns that we had to address beforehand, were straining at the bit to get back to their kids. They've, the paras and teachers have had frequent and repeated meetings with us over the course of the last couple of weeks in particular, and, and now we're cutting them loose. So they're gonna be doing their thing, which is, which is connect with kids and start teaching. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Again, all the same, if there's anything that we can do, make sure you let us know.
You got it.
And Bob, you kept going in and out. I apologize, it keeps freezing. Regarding like, any situations where some of the, the children's needs are higher, are we able, and you might have said this, you kept freezing, are we able to get what is needed out to the home, whether it's disabled child or where there's any OT, you know, whatever.
We cannot, oh, you're, it's a great question, Lisa.
Thank you.
That's a great question. No, we cannot get anything out to the home.
Okay.
So other than remotely, we cannot get anything out to the home. You have to also remember that 60, I'm sorry for interrupting, Lisa. Do you want us to finish?
No, I just, I just know that there, there, I mean, obviously, there's barriers, I get it, due to what's going on, but I just know that some parents are struggling with not being able to assist their, their children at home with the needs of what us as a district provide those children throughout the day, you know, so.
We have some, we have some families that are really in a, in a tough spot relative to their sometimes very disabled kids. And those are the kids that are in district. Don't forget, we have another 63 kids who were placed at out-of-district schools, who are also very challenged, and those moms and dads are struggling as well. We're trying to facilitate with our out-of-district schools and my out-of-district staff, Ben, Dick, Sarah, Colette, the work with, with those kids, as well as 132 kids with disabilities in magnet schools.
As you know, my neighbors, I see it on a daily basis, I do see the struggling with that family. So that was definitely not only a question, but it's, it's difficult. I just feel like, you know, just feeling, just feeling for them, but as long as they know that we hear that, we hear them, and we can be, be there, a phone call away or a Zoom away, you know, that, that's great, so.
Our marching orders are to do the best we can, although it is going to be at a distance.
Fine, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else anyone would like to cover this evening, or are we, Jack?
Yeah, I hate to extend the meeting, but I, I did want to go back to Jen's presentation. And when she was showing, there was a couple of assignments, and the number of assigned compared to the number of turned in was, the number of turned in was relatively low. So what's the process if you're not getting responses? Is it each individual teacher's responsibility, or what are they doing?
So, and again, I want to be clear that that was just a snapshot in time. That happened in at the beginning. It had, may have been just assigned, or, because they. I think our, our, our goal right now is connection, not perfection. We're really trying to work with families. It's very difficult, and we're trying to drill down to why would someone not have completed the assignment? So let's say, for example, the parents are having trouble logging in. In the first few weeks, what we're really trying to, that we understand the barrier between why a child might not have completed the work. Is the work too hard? Is it that they haven't been able to log in? Is there Wi-Fi connectivity issues? So it kind of replicates what would happen in a normal school setting. When the child would maybe have some difficulty with work, first, the teacher would try their sort of general educational repertoire. They would check in with the child, hey, how's it going for you? In this case, it might be via a Zoom meeting or a phone call home. And then should a teacher require assistance, they are able to reach out to, depending on the grade level, their school principal, assistant principal, school psychologist, guidance counselor, social worker, just depending on some of the things we've identified. And in some cases, the school's technology teacher can reach out and help support the kid getting logged in and things of that nature. So we do have a very, it's, it's early on in the process, and I'll be happy to, in a couple of weeks, report to you more data around the actual numbers. Where I've actually asked principals to think about how many people are connected, just in general? How many kids are consistently connected and getting the work done? And how many kids are, we are wondering if there's going to be a population of kids that just sort of fall off the radar. But in our most recent report, it was a very low percentage of students who just weren't doing logging in at all and being very, very disconnected. So at this point, I'm hopeful that that number will continue to climb. You know, as you can imagine, it's hard for kids. Wait a minute, home is home and school is school, and now all of a sudden, home is school. So that's a very challenging adjustment, and they're grieving. Bob was very smart to point out that many of the things that we're seeing is the grief, the loss of this spring, the connection, the memories. You know, students in transitional areas or students who rely on the social network of friends. All of that is a process that we're going through. So we're just really trying to collect the information and find out more about kids, but there's many. but there's many supports for them to...
Jack, we're a little bit ahead of the teaching, just because, for whatever reason, we started sooner. And you really, it takes a good couple of weeks to really get it where you can really check in every day and take attendance, and you know, you start realizing where the things are falling, you know, either not going well and things that are going very well. It does take a good, good couple of weeks. Just connecting virtually is certainly like phenomenal.
Yeah. Jen answered the question exactly what I was hoping to hear, so that was terrific. I just wanted to make sure that the teachers had the support they needed, that they weren't just left out there to do that on their own. So thank you, Jen. That was a great answer.
Thank you.
Jen, I'd like to say some, before you guys wrap up, you made a very, very valid point, or just a wonderful point, how you just stated about it being a grieving process. I mean, you have families that have, you know, one child, like, that can, or difficulty with not being able to be there with their friends, whether it's sports, what may have you, and then you have the other child that enjoys being, you know, home in their own setting and feel the comfort of that. And you can get a household of, you know, it can go either way, where you can have some chaos, it can run smoothly, it can be up and down. But the one thing I'd like to say is that I know for myself and other families, we are utilizing the school-based health clinic for, for any kind of situations where we need to use our voices. And they're using the Zoom, and that's wonderful. And I've heard several individuals have called me families, and there's been so much success with this occurring. It's only been a few weeks, but, I mean, sometimes they can, you know, meet once, two times a week, and I think it's such a key piece because what's happening is something we've never dealt with. It's a, it's a venture that's just something that's, to me, unspeakable. I mean, I, in my household, you have one on one spectrum, and the other one on the other spectrum, as I stated. It's become a little crazy and a little chaotic. So utilizing them, I think, is very important. I think that you, as well as other, other staff members, we need to really, really just let everybody know, inform them that it's there and it's available, because there's been other situations where the house has become so chaotic, there's stress and fighting. We want to minimize all that. So we're, our families and our students can focus on the educational piece, not the...
That's, that's exactly right.
The areas that you're unable to communicate because one child's unhappy and one child is excessively happy, you know what I mean? So I think we need to really, I don't want to say force it, but I think that we need to make sure our families know that there's, it's out there, okay?
I will certainly include that if I do a family newsletter. That's a great idea. Thank you, Lisa.
All right, so at this time, is any, can I have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn. Second.
Second.
Right. Thank you, everybody.